A diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Host. Art. Colors. Host of colors. Ready. Two. About. Ace. Forward. Arch. Colors. All. Order. Arms. Ready. Right. Right. Ace. Hedis.
My name is Mike Rothers. I'm the responsible adult. Petty Officer Greco and Major Barney are both on other missions today. And I just want to thank the Board of Education for including Garfield and GROTC in tonight's proceeding. We're proud to do it for you. And before we leave, I would like each cadet to introduce themselves and tell you a little bit about themselves and what they do in the ROTC program.
Hi, I'm Cadet Morris. I'm going to Ten Free next year and I'm Assistant Operations Officer.
Cadet Harris, I'm going to be junior next year and I'm Supply Officer.
Cadet Mountshock, I'm going into software here and I'm a male Supply Officer.
Cadet Navarro, I'll be a senior next year and I am the Cadet of Operations.
I'm Cadet Bailey. I'm the upcoming commander of the unit. I'm going to be the senior. Thank you.
Nice job.
Left. Ace. Forward. Arch.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, we will open it up to Community and School Reflections.
Yes, I'd like to thank Constable Large Fusco for working with me and getting some new goalposts at Boctle High School. You know, I realize that we don't have the money to do that at this time down here. So I used to do that through a miscellaneous parks fund that was available when I was sharing a planning like Mr. Fusco is. And he was able to get it through. So they should be putting that up. Now, we used to do it for the school system. I don't know. I was in a conference call with him and legal and they said it might have to be a donation and then, you know, put up. But we've done that before. The ones that are existing in Elick were bought through miscellaneous parks by the city and higher too. But Boctle was very grateful for that situation. And I just again, I'd like to thank Mr. Fusco for his hard work. Thank you.
I just want to say one thing. I know we all went to the graduations and a lot of things were good. But there were two students that are from North High School, the valedictorian and the second of the class. And they did a really good job at the graduation. They will be receiving two laptops, free of charge, donated, given to them because of their grades and how well they have done through one of the organizations from Juvenile Court. So I wanted to say that and thank them for doing such a good job in representing Akron Public Schools as students this past year. Thank you.
And a couple of things. As always, and I attended the Akron School Practical Nursing Graduation at OSBA. Eleven students. Actually ran into someone I knew. So it was someone that, it was just impressive to see because this is a person as the graduates are marching in and all of a sudden this person came in in full PhD cap gown and everything else. So this is someone who had been an educator and, you know, they moved to Alaska. She came back and when she thought about whether she was going to take the time to renew her education, she thought, well, maybe this is time for a change. So at 66, she went through the Practical Nursing Program and graduated. But it was just very interesting to see all the graduates and one of them had the full regalia for, I think it was a PhD. Definitely a doctor. And then I also attended to the Northeast Ohio Baseball Coaches Association All-Star Games. And so on the Summit County teams, there were two students from Firestone, one from East, one from Garfield. And the East coach was the coach of one of the teams. So very good representation in terms of that. And then I also went on Saturday to OSBA had an outing at the Indians game. So it was a lot of baseball this week for me. And that was part of fundraiser for their scholarship program. So hopefully we may get back from that.
I wanted to particularly give a shout out to some students and teams who volunteered. Mature Services had a voucher giveaway for seniors in need. And I was working it for my day job. And they were there. It was the Firestone, let me get this right. Firestone. And now it was their volleyball team, I believe, and the basketball team, I think, from Garfield.
Oh, I think I just.
Kenmore Garfield. So I might have that backwards on what teams they were on. But they volunteered their time to load senior boxes and food into, I know they had boxes for 600 seniors in need. So it was a beautiful day. Fortunately, it wasn't scorching hot. But they worked very hard. And the seniors loved seeing the students as well. So it was a nice combination. And so I wanted to give them a particular shout out for all their hard work. And graduation season was amazing as always. For, you know, I got into a Facebook argument with a gentleman over the weekend about our failing schools and his quote. And it was quite an argument. I finally told him we were not going to agree. So I was going to move on. But I would challenge anyone who wants to give us that moniker to, again, you think we've got that? Come follow me to those schools. Come with me. Give me a call. Shoot me an email. Or anybody that's sitting at this table and we'll take you into those schools. I challenge anyone to look at those faces that crossed and to listen to what they've accomplished already and what their goals are and tell me they're not worth it. That's all I have to say about that.
I just want to talk a little bit about Ennis. I know they had a little carnival to bring Ennis and Roswell Kent together. And on that night, they started the students voting on a new mascot, new school colors. And they had a partner in the Akron Public Zoos, the Akron Zoos, helping with looking at different animals for mascots and things of that nature. Well, the vote is in between the two, the combined student bodies now. And we now have the Ennis Panthers and they will be, their school colors will be gray and Jaguars. You're correct. Thank you very much. Jaguars. And their colors are gray and green. Thank you. Good catch.
With that, we have no requests to request the board or communications recognitions. So we will move to approval of the meeting minutes for the regular meeting, June 12, 2017, and special meeting, June 17, 2017.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any questions or discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Otterman.
Yes.
Reverend Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Walsh.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
And superintendent's recommendations.
Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 66 personnel recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any questions or discussion on the personnel recommendations? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes, abstaining from items 59 and 64.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, abstaining from item number 65, please.
Mr. Otterman.
Yes.
Reverend Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Walsh.
Yes, abstaining from 66.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes, abstaining from number 63.
Next, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration three motions and nine resolutions on the consent agenda. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any questions or discussion on the consent agenda?
I just want to, my normal comment on this on item number two, just hopefully, you know, at some point in time in the future, we have a little more say on maybe elongating that calendar. I know it was a discussion in a meeting I was at today and what our specialty schools are looking at. So just keep that out in front.
Other questions or discussion?
I'd also like to add on to that, just that number two as well, another suffix for me as well, is that I would like to see us continue to bring that up. And perhaps if we need to look at adding some observers or changing or providing some instruction to the negotiating team or changing the method of negotiating team, I'd really like us to continue to keep that calendar at the front so that we can look at addressing the summer slide issue. We've talked about, you know, even just starting out as a discussion point, just a redistribution of days. So I'd like to see that as well. I also had a discussion this morning with the superintendent, a very good discussion. You know, as we look at moving the cosmetology lab, which is part of this, to Boctle and we think about what's going in at Boctle and we have the dates and some of the planning here for the academy design. As we look at Boctle, I would just like us to see how that fits in a broader context and to make sure that we are putting attractive programming, Boctle programming that is more than maybe just cosmetology. Not that cosmetology is a great program, but I would like to see us put some magnet programming there that is on par with some of our other schools. To make sure that we're cognizant about what we're putting there and what it says about how we view that school and that neighborhood. And I know that we will. So, but I don't want it to go unsaid. Any other questions or discussion?
Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Otterman.
Yes.
Reverend Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Walsh.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
And finally, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 42 personnel business affairs recommendations. Sorry. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
So move.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any questions or discussions on business affairs?
Item number four, this is something that has already happened and we had not paid that we need to make sure that it's paid.
No, on that one, we didn't get the actual contract back in time, but it's all a legitimate expense.
It was a lovely event.
Yes. I heard it was a very nice event, yeah. That's why I thought maybe they had been paid already. I knew it happened.
Right.
Any other questions or discussion on business affairs? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Otterman.
Yes.
Reverend Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Walsh.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Superintendent's report.
Yes, first I'll have Kathy McBay introduce appointed staff member.
Um, Judy, if you would stay, please. Judy's staying appointed this evening as the principal. And I'd like you to just give just a brief overview background on yourself.
I have been your background of about four years as Dean at Mickey Bright. So I'll be taking positions principal at Mickey Bright Elementary. I've been in education. It'll be my eighth year now. So I taught for you five years and then administration past three.
Congratulations.
A couple of other updates. I know at our last board meeting, there were a couple of speakers talking about the LPM program. At this time, the August class will continue in terms of getting enrolled and going through. And then I have had a couple of conversations about, with some potential partners. So I'll have a report at an upcoming board meeting and maybe some potential recommendations for the LPM program. This week, there was also a trip to Nashville sponsored by the United Way of Summit County to talk more about their bold goals. One part of it, we looked at financial empowerment centers, you know, because that's one of their bold goals in terms of financial empowerment and literacy in the area. The other one was, there was a partner that ran what's called a family resource center. So it dealt with a lot of the wraparound services for school children in Nashville. And of course, the last part of the day was spent at McGavick High School where they heard from some business partners of metropolitan Nashville schools and their academies in terms of how their academy coaches are working with the business community and how that relationship is going. So I really give a lot of kudos to Jim Mullen for quickly arranging that trip and then getting some information. This afternoon, we had a wrap up or a follow up with the CEOs that went to Nashville previously. Don Taylor facilitated that meeting. We're too lazy to get some of the next steps for the greater Akron chamber. The other thing I wanted to mention is that Mr. Miller had mentioned a radio program about Garfield and their color. So here, between Kenmore and Garfield, Garfield has more, this is mine, it's number 23. No. You know, until we finalize the actual name they're taking, their better uniforms, they have Garfield, of course, on the front. They added Kenmore to the back. So until we decide what the final names are, and I'll have a report for you and the other board members about Project Ujima's next steps in terms of getting out in the community with some discussion circles, I'll have that shortly.
Question on the, their resource center down in Nashville?
Yes.
Is that inside one of the school buildings or how's that? Because I know Juvenile Court has what they call the family resource center as well.
Right, right.
And probably, I was thinking maybe we could kind of collaborate with that.
Right. So this, the one that we visited was actually offsite. It was at a Salvation Army facility. But they, the folks from United Way in Nashville talked about there are some school-based family resource centers that they have that provide a lot of those different supports. So that's something I want to look at in terms of some of the services that we provide. We probably should look at having those services in the schools as well and figuring out a way to do that efficiently and economically.
Thank you.
That's my report.
Other questions or discussion for the superintendent's report? Hearing none. President's report. There was so much since we didn't do Community and School Reflections that I don't even know where to begin. So I'm just going to highlight a couple of things. Graduation season, as always, was phenomenal. It was, you know, it was another banner year, I think, for students in APS and just a highlight of everything that we have. I mean, we, you know, to your point earlier, I would stack us up against any district in the state in terms of what we have to offer our students. I mean, it really is just amazing, not just to be part of the graduation and shake their hands and walk across the stage, but to hear the stories and to hear about the scholarships and where they're going and what they're doing. And, I mean, just across the board, another great season. So thanks to all of the staff that work so hard to put those together every year and for including us and giving us the opportunity to be a part of it. Because it really does make us feel good about the work that we're doing as well. So I also went to the Ennis Kent merger celebration and publicly, because I don't know if I did it before, I just want to say to the superintendent and to the staff and the principals from those two schools and their staff, what a great job they did. I mean, and really just taking initiative and reaching out to the parents and to students and keeping the focus where it should be, which is with the students who are going to be part of that school. And then for going the extra step and working and bringing in the Akron Zoo to help them determine who their mascot would be and what their colors would be. I mean, how fun was that? And it looks really good, too, I think. So just kudos to them. Great celebration. Lots going on. I have a great boomerang of Ms. Walsh doing whack-a-mole or something. If you'd like to see it, it's a lot of fun.
Not whack-a-mole, okay.
Well, you can't tell that in a thing. It just looks good. There and back and there and back. It's good. Anyway. Mr. Miller and I were invited to tour the Stark State campus at White Pond and to sit down with Perrin Jones for a little bit. Dr. Jones, and talk to her about all of the partnerships and opportunities and things that we're working on together and what they view their role in the Akron community as being. And it was a great conversation. So I just want to publicly say thank you to her for reaching out and including us. We run into each other in a number of things, whether it's college and career academies or the Cleveland Atlantic Akron General needed the advisory council. And so she stepped up one day and said, I'd really like to invite you to come out. If any of the other board members would like for me to help put something together, for you to go out and visit their White Pond campus, even if it is somewhat temporary in nature, and talk to them about what they're doing, let me know. And I'd be happy to facilitate that. I think everybody should go out and see what they're doing. They're great partners. Mr. Pendleton and I had the opportunity to go to the Cuyahoga Valley Environmental Education Center where Katie Rice is running the summer programming. Of course, she does much more. But one of the things that she's doing is running the summer programming there where many of our students are attending, thanks to some grant funding that we get pretty much every year, several years since I've been on the board, I think. And probably, I'm sure, beyond that. But we got invited to go out and have lunch, which was tacos. So I was happy. We got to see the students eating lunch. We toured the facilities. And what an opportunity for some of our kids who might not get something like that otherwise, just that enrichment and keeping them engaged over the summer and probably out of trouble. So great. I'm really sad that none of you bragged about the board retreat, the hours that we spent together on a Saturday.
It wasn't invaluable.
Talking about the future of this.
There were words that could not describe it, Pedro.
Apparently. You are all so very welcome for all of that time. So, anyway. I also had the opportunity to speak out and warn two about, a little bit about the district and what we're doing. Had lots of good questions from the residents in North Hill at Patterson Park. And so it was great to hear from them. And I think that will end my president's report for today.
Can I just, one thing, just one of the things that I had the last time when we didn't do it, we were talking about the great event at Ennis and Kent. I also went to the closing of Bettis. And I want to say what a fabulous event. They really did a wonderful job. And that community just wrapped around those people and supported them. And I got to see the whole PowerPoint presentation. I know who Nathaniel Bettis is now. And I know the history of the school. But it was packed. There were so many people there and the community did so much and provided so much food. So it was very, you can tell that they were going to be, that school's going to be missed in that community. But I just wanted to congratulate Mrs. Chari and what a great job she did on putting that together because it really was. And they actually had, from the teacher of the year thing though, the portraits, they had years of portraits. So it was really amazing to see all the things that they had there. But it was just a very nice event. And you could tell that they got an awful lot of the community involved in that and helped sponsor the closing event for.
Couple items I want to mention tonight. Thanks to the board for being patient with me. Received a board letter supplement. I know late, but a bigger thank you to Marilyn for putting up with our office and getting all of these things out and adjusted. So let's explain a little bit about what you have. The board letter supplement is primarily the finance end of year document. We have permanent appropriations in place. We do our very best to stay as close to those estimates from September of the previous year. So I think you remember from the forecast presentation, we've done a lot this year from building closures to six bargaining group negotiations, health insurance renewals. Sometimes you have to make your best yes with those estimates. So, and then we modify those with grants and, you know, the updated numbers throughout the school year. So Marilyn gets to do and reflect all of that, like maybe two days prior to the board meeting. So I thank you very much. But it is a really important board meeting in terms of bringing the end of the fiscal year to a close and starting the new one. So I know there's a lot of numbers on this spreadsheet, the last two pages of the supplement, but it shows the depth of how many other programs we have and grants we receive outside of general program. If anybody wants any more detail on those, feel free to ask. And then the last page is the temporary appropriations for the start of the 1718 school year. If you notice the difference on the appropriations, you see a lot of well-known numbers. We estimate 25% to the budget commission of Summit County to get us started. And you also notice some very specific dollar amounts. And the difference is there, where we've been awarded grants and we know exactly what the state and our federal government is going to award, we put those right into the permanent appropriations. Then between now and September 30th, usually the second board meeting of September, you'll see us kind of reconcile all those numbers, all the estimates, all the revenue estimates to our next permanent appropriations. So we try to match that as closely as possible to the June 30th of 2018 appropriations. We have our end of year cash transfers. That's also included. We have five cash transfers. A couple are routine in terms of permanent improvement and athletics fund and the life insurance self-insure, the liability self-insurance fund. And then a couple of them are deficits, where we have to cover those out of general program.
Any questions for Mr. Pendleton?
Any questions for Mr. Pendleton? Committeeing reports, legal contracts and board policy.
I have for the second reading prior to approval, new policy procurement and use of Narcan in emergencies, excuse me, revised policy 3217 weapons, revised policy 4217 weapons, revised policy 7217 weapons. Those are the policies I have for the second reading prior to approval.
Thank you. I have a couple of comments or questions, but first, does anyone else? Okay, so, on my, on the, I asked a question earlier, so just for, so that the rest of the board can hear that the question was asked. On the use of the Narcan, my only question was that the policy does not necessarily specify who at the schools, but as I understand, we are waiting on the draft administrative guidelines, and the draft administrative guidelines will provide some more detail as to who. In regard to the weapons policies, my only question, and this is something for maybe legal and board policy, I'm asking without the president's hat on, if someone could look, whether or not we can be more restrictive than is permitted by statute. And the reason I ask is because those, the policies as presented do authorize now, which is, appears to be a change in our policy, that folks with carry concealed carry permits can bring firearms onto school property so long as they are, either that person remains in the car or the weapon remains in the car with the car locked. I would like to know for my, just my own knowledge, I guess, whether or not we can be more restrictive than that and leave it as it is and say, oh, maybe you know the answer to that.
Well, I, this is the law as it is. It was passed in March of 2017. Remember, this has nothing to do with our weapons policy with regards to students, so that's not changing.
Sure.
But this, this is the law as it stands in the state of Ohio. We can't conflict with the law, but this is about as, you know.
We can't be more restrictive than?
Not, we can't, we can't conflict with the law. And that would be a conflict with the law because this was specifically passed by the General Assembly and school districts from all over the state of Ohio are passing the policy. So, unfortunately, it does give those concealed weapons carry permit people who have that the ability to have a firearm locked in their car.
I don't necessarily like it, but I also appreciate the explanation because if anyone asks, I don't want anyone to think that we're suddenly changing policy unnecessarily or like, if we could be more restrictive, why aren't we? So, that explains it.
And Mr. Brown, I just add, when we look at the law as far as open to carry and, you know, concealing, having a concealed weapon or permit to carry concealed, look at those policies, they are kind of strict and they tell you what you can and cannot do. I know we talk about on school property, we don't want them, because that was one of the questions I asked, because I had a concern with, we're saying in one policy and then saying the other policy, because one, you can carry it anytime you want, wherever you want, without having to permit. That's part of the law, but on the other hand, you have a carry to conceal. And so, it wasn't a lot of wiggle room because I was concerned about that myself, and that was, excuse me, part of the, one of the questions that came up, can we do that? Because it almost sounds like it's a conflict, but it's not a conflict with what we're doing. May look at a conflict as far as the law and the state representatives who passed that law.
Maybe for advocacy purposes, maybe we talk to OSBA or someone else about, it just doesn't make sense to me to allow them on property at all, but.
So, does this conflict with the, everywhere you go in public places, a hospital somewhere else have a sign that says no guns? Now, does that conflict with that? It says you're not supposed to have a weapon in that area.
Well, it doesn't conflict with that because we have signs outside of all of our school buildings, and I think Dan can attest to that. No one is allowed to carry a weapon inside the school. Of course, there's exception, there's the police officer.
The school is the grounds around.
But it's the school safety zone, that's, that's where this is affecting. So, a car could essentially be parked, locked in the parking lot with a gun inside as long as the individual meets the criteria of the law.
That was another question that was asked. There were a lot of questions asked during this meeting as far as this policy because there are concerns that, you know, we had as well with the, having a weapon on, because that was one of the things, even as Patrick asked in the school, having it on the school property. I asked, you know, how can we have it on the school property? But then you look at the law, and the law says you gotta do it. So, we'll check with Ohio School Board Association, I'll contact their people if you want, and they're probably going to tell us and look at the law, but we can still contact them.
Or even just for future advocacy or something, see if there are opportunities to advocate for exceptions for public schools.
Because those laws are?
We just recently lost two more students.
Yeah.
Unnecessarily, unnecessary violence.
Right.
One from a firearm and one from a knife, but still, I don't think they need to be any closer to our students than they already are.
And that's something we need to think about lobbying, because there are some school districts, too. Our neighbors, some of our neighboring school districts are lobbying for their people to carry them in the schools currently. I mean, we don't want that, but they're lobbying to, for staff to carry them in the schools. I don't, I don't want us to ever get to that point, but that's what they're, some of them are doing.
So, they, I know that they debated this on college campuses, and I just looked it up just to double-check my memory, but, you know, there are a lot of people that think that this means that you can holster and just walk wherever you want inside public schools and public universities, and you can't.
Right.
So, just to say that out loud, just in case, you know, someone turns on their TV or their internet comes in the middle, just to say that out loud. So, you know, whether they were previous to the, this is take, this taking effect in March, leaving them in their cars before anyway, we wouldn't have known. So, I guess we're, we're really know or saw, we're just complying with the law whether we like it or not. But thank you for bringing that up.
There was a lot of, a lot of questions, because of course I have a lot of concerns with weapons and them being on the premises and so forth, because I know there have been some incidents with Akron Public Schools where kids have had some weapons and something was going on, and it led to, leading up to finding that, but it was in the, in the vehicle, you know, and really not supposed to be there, but, I mean, and that's just a, I don't know, that's, that's a lawful thing, but I will call OSBA and I'll give a report and see what they say.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for legal and board policy, finance and capital management?
Finance committee, the Akron Board of Education met on June 21st with following members, President, President, myself, Ryan Pendleton. And we considered the following. One, health insurance rates, and you'll see, does everyone have a, the information about health insurance rate? And we can, those that deal with dental and vision will remain the same. The medical prescription has increased by 10.2%, which is within the estimated increase range for that category. So, we see the breakdown and we see the total cost that are all there, estimated by Oswald. And then, number two, our health insurance information. A contingent completed a tour of Paladina Health Friday, June 23rd, to perform due diligence and to make future recommendations regarding Paladina. A brokerage and consulting service agreement from Oswald Companies was presented to the finance committee for review. The new contract with Oswald will be stepping up the contract amount, but will reduce our vendor contract so that there will be no net increase in that. And we hope to share in the future some more information about the Paladina Health information that, I was thinking about that today for whatever reason, it just popped in my mind, I think because I went to my, my primary care today, and how that might work for us to have that kind of group so that we can have better service, have committed physicians who know about us and know our, our group of people. So, it's going to be interesting to see how that, that pans out, and hopefully we have the union and others who would buy into, to something like that.
Let's see, we also, the finance department's going to be going out for a request, request for proposal for general custody and banking services to be effective January 1st, 2018. We're required by law to do so. I think we sort of put it on hold last year with the Huntington First Merit merger, let that work its way through before we tried to make any changes. So, that's going to be going out to local banks, see what they might be able to do for us from that standpoint. The board also has some information on our investment review. As we've pointed out in the past, and you can take a look at, you know, the general fund, had we still been operating with our investment policy under our old policy, project, we'd project about $53,000 in income compared to a projection for the new investment policy of $427,000. Similar story with the construction funds, projecting $565,000 of income compared to our old investment policy, which would have generated, which would estimate generate around $87,000, and same for permanent improvement, projection of $166,000 compared to $22,000. And once again, these are very, still very conservative funds that, I mean, we have to, we have to follow state law as far as what we're investing, and we're just being a little smarter these days with that. And as well, not on here, but we have also just started using the Stark Ohio Fund, which is for our overnight money, and that's nine basis points compared to, what was it, one, one before, something like that?
Point one five.
Point one five, one and a half, so, and that's, so that's generating us some extra income as well, so we're just working smarter with the money. And then lastly, and this is something we also discussed at the board retreat, the rules and regulations and the, basically looking at getting rid of the rules and regulations and combining that with bylaws and a new board member packet, that, I think we're sort of done with that in the finance committee, though it's a treasurer's office document, but being referred to legal and policy for further review.
Thank you. Anything for finance and capital management?
Just a question, because you said the contingent went, but a general reaction to the people that toured Paladina?
I've heard very positive.
Okay.
On the concern side would be, this is a disruptive way to engage your medical provider, so, kind of looking out three to five years, what does that mean? I think the concern was, am I not going to have access to my specialty care provider? And of course, they still will, but there's still a little bit of question, some things that we need to do.
What was the makeup of the, the number of staff that went up to Paladina?
It's primarily the HBAC, which is the Healthcare Benefits Advisory Committee. It's referenced in a couple bargaining contracts, and I think we even extended that to other bargaining contracts, but anyone that wanted to go, representing our different staff members, can go.
Thank you.
I just want to thank the finance committee for their work, especially when you consider those investments. I mean, that's, that's huge. That's monumental. Those are, those are real, those are real dollars. Even in a multi-million dollar budget, it's still, you know, a whole teacher here or a whole custodial worker there that we earn just for investments. So, thank you all very much for that.
Any other questions or discussion? Constructional policy and student achievement?
Strategic policy committee has updated, compared to two of our very important district-wide initiatives. First one, the Icama, and we have the handout at the spot, which includes the five design teams for the Icama school. They've been hard at work and see who's on it and who's chairing it or who's chairing it. All, all board members were invited to, for a large review meeting this afternoon. Mrs. Mansfield, Mr. Miller, Dr. Walker, and myself were able to attend. The teams are midway through the design process, so it was great timing to hear what was going on in these teams. They've got some fabulous ideas. They need a school about the size of, no, to make it all happen, but I, but there are some, there are some great things. And on the backside of the handout, there's the timeline for the next four months through the design approval process for the master plan. The one thing we want to remind you about is that a calendar invited out to you for the 31st, and the other big meeting is the 20, oh, the 31st is the other review team meeting, so that's, would be similar today where you'd see some more reaction and what each of the teams did and how they're working together. So, it was a, it was a very strong event and there's been an awful lot of enthusiasm for it, so, kind of everybody working together.
Right, and your second handout is for the college and career academies. The academy design teams have informed at each high school to plan the next phase of the plan. Teachers, administrators, community members, parents, students have signed up to serve on these, each, and each is held at each of the high schools. The teams will reflect on the student and community career interest survey data, existing career education programs and facilities currently available at their high school, and will examine workforce data on high-demand sustainable wage positions in northeast Ohio. Each team will design a proposal for the superintendent and the board identifying priority workforce pathways that we would like to see at their school. So, we ask that rather than having these go out earlier today and inundate your mailbox, you're going to get all these invites. So, warning, warning, they are coming.
Do you worry?
But don't freak out. If you could at least try to come to the cluster assigned to your, that you're assigned to, try to get to those. The rest, we're just going to put on your calendar for options, kind of like for with graduation. If you can, if you have time and it prevents you to go to all, go crazy. If not, try to get to your own cluster, and if you can't for some reason, like you have vacation, because if you look at the dates, we'll look in July, August, prime vacation time. If you can maybe let the other board members know so that we can have a board member in attendance, that would be great. Is that a thing on there? I think so, yes.
I see some, some have one meeting, some have two meetings. The ones with two meetings, are those just, are those the same meeting, just different opportunities or different content at each meeting?
They're different content.
Okay.
The only one, early college, they, because early college is so unique, they're not going to, the students are already sort of in their academy, because they think they just want one meeting.
Okay.
The rest are all two. The last meeting is just in case some community members can't make it to the longer meetings, they'll be one review meeting for any team that needs it. So, that's an optional one, we'll give you how many buildings are going to need that at the end.
Thank you.
Do it one for, because on the original one, there were some additional dates, so that we think we're just down to the two?
Yeah, those, the original one that you received, the dates they could choose from, so they honed in on these.
Okay.
They all needed to pick two.
Two, yeah.
We're thinking it'll require two, they can always schedule more if needed, but we're thinking four total hours will do it.
I'm going to say, I swear, I might drop another tongue.
Yeah.
Okay.
I know Ms. Tecker and Ms. Hanson have done a fantastic job at communicating all of these. I assume in the same fashion, this will go out en masse, it'll go out to the newspapers, it'll go out to city council and county council and all the PTAs within these clusters and, I mean, to get as much community support as possible and to never be able to let anyone say that I didn't know.
Yes, they are doing all calls, because Deborah and I were just talking about it right beforehand. The signup has happened over multiple months to the different audiences on who would like to serve. If you-
If you would like us to do the city council again, we can do that, but during that first wave of the community meetings, and when we met, they signed up if they wanted to serve, and that's the group then that was invited for the community meetings. But the whole call is going out to all the families as another dose of reminders.
Okay. Can I make a suggestion, too, that was made to me, so I'm passing it along, that we try to get our coaches to involve their families, because they have strong influence on their families, and they've been asked to be included. So if we could get Mr. Vasladi to reach out to the coaches, to reach out to the families, that may have a little more of the, than off.
Good suggestion. Any questions or discussion for instructional policy and student achievement? Any unfinished business? Hearing none, I'm not prepared. Hearing none pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22G1 for the purposes of discussing the employment of a public employer official of the school district, Revised Code Section 121.22G3 to consult with legal counsel involving, to discuss disputes involving the board and/or the school district that are the subject of pending a permanent court action. I hereby request a motion that we recess into executive session.
Go ahead.
You have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion before we recess? Hearing none, roll call please.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Well, we'll take.